Good evening. Welcome to the April 10th Smyrna Town Council Meeting. Tonight, we have citizens' comments that we may or may not have, if I understood right, Mr. Gill, but we'll do that before we get into our meeting agenda. So is there anybody here speaking that we know of? Carl Jenkins, are you in the audience? Are you speaking this evening? If you would, come to the podium. You have three minutes and just share with us what your concerns are.
Okay. Well, quickly, I'd like to... My name is Carl Jenkins. I'm part owner in Smyrna Auto Sales off Lowry Street and also a couple of the lots in Murfreesboro I have. I know Smyrna's trying to make some new ordinances and I commend Smyrna. Basically, the reason why I'm here today is to discuss the new ordinances that Smyrna's trying to put in place. I commend Smyrna for wanting to clean up and make Smyrna a nicer-looking city, but I oppose the making of car dealerships to paint lines on their lot, and I'm here to discuss why. Once again, I've been in business for 25 years, and I feel like I've been trained by a couple of the best. John Tinkum and Tim Tomlin taught me the importance of lot organization and to be creative by changing up our lot on a weekly basis. Sometimes we have the vehicles angled right, sometimes we angle left, sometimes we may turn one sideways to make it special. As far as if we are low on inventory, we might spread our vehicles out a little wider and to still make our lot look full. I've got some pictures here I wanted to give to you all so you all can review them to see what our lots look like and how organized they are.
If you would just give them to Ms. Diane right there. She'll circulate them up this way. Thank you.
Some of those are lots... One starts with my Smyrna Auto Sales. I've got some that starts with Tomlin Automotive, Autoland. I've got even a couple dealerships in Murfreesboro that don't have paint lots, but they're nice and organized. As far as I've looked at new car dealerships, and they don't paint lines, and a lot of times, the reason why is for the same reason I don't. As a business owner, I believe you should take pride in your lot and you should keep your lot looking nice. I have trained my managers to do so the same way I've been trained. I believe that this is one reason we are successful. If the city wants to get those dealers that don't take pride in their lots to clean up, then maybe they should invite them to a town meeting to discuss on how we can clean up the city. Don't punish the businesses that already work hard to keep their lots clean and organized. Painting lines on our lot will only take away from our creativity. I do not believe in it will just encourage dealers to take pride. As far as when we put our lots and cars out there... I own Right Price Auto Sales in Murfreesboro. They don't have the ordinance for it, but we keep our lot nice and organized. Like, if we get low, we might make a couple extra steps in between the cars to make it look full. It's all about marketing. You aim on certain ways. You sometimes put specials, but I do encourage Smyrna dealers to take pride and clean up their lots. I know some lots, some people might park in there right away, and they might have cars crammed in there or something, but that's not us, and painting lines is not going to change the pride that people take on their businesses. So hopefully, we can... If you all want to meet, I'd be glad to have anyone come down here, see us at our lots and see what we're talking about.
Three minutes, Vice Mayor.
Mr. Jenkins, thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
We appreciate those. Is Tom Bowers of Trading Post Auto Sales in the audience, or will you be speaking this evening?
Yes, sir. He had to go to Oklahoma.
Okay. Are you speaking on his behalf?
Yes, sir.
If you would, tell us who you are when you come up to the microphone so we can record who you are and the address. And you've got three minutes.
Yes, sir. My name is Robert Schultz. I live at 413 Pioneer Drive here in Smyrna.
Okay.
I'm here representing Trading Post Auto Sales. We have two locations here in Smyrna, one across the street from this building and one three miles toward Murfreesboro. We've been selling cars in Smyrna for almost 30 years. Starting the new regulations proposed for Smyrna auto dealers, we noticed one regulation that we believe hurts our sales and hens us the taxes you receive. The regulation is the one having us stripe our lots like parking lots. Us as auto dealers are objective for our business and much most likely retail businesses. To sell a product, to sell that product, you need to make it appealing to consumers. You need the customer to look at your product. One of these things auto dealers use to get a look from potential customers is the way to display their vehicles. We move our inventory from one area to another area. Cars, trucks will rotate from one side of the lot to the other side. Our vehicles will be facing traffic one week, face the way next week. This movement of cars, trucks, vans, et cetera, makes our inventory have an all-new appeal. This fresh look makes people look at our cars, trucks, and et cetera. These looks turns into customers which sell our cars and which turn-turn makes us and our families a living along with making the town of Smyrna, Rutherford County, and the state of Tennessee tax money. By making auto dealers stripe their businesses like a parking lot, it takes away from the dealer's ability to turn his inventory into different angles that get the attention or look again. Most businesses and auto dealers' inventory will fluctuate. Sometimes, on both our lots, we have 150 vehicles, then sometimes it may be 90 vehicles. With striped lots, there will be striped parking spaces left empty. This look will take a car lot with all cars facing straight like a parking lot from a car lot to a parking lot. At one of our locations, we move our vehicles out each day for display and move them back in to the van slot at night. If I must stripe the spots where they're displayed during sale hours, then at night it will look like a parking lot. I believe making dealers stripe their lot like a parking lot will make our inventory less appealing, which will get us fewer looks, which in turn will sell us fewer cars. This is not a good thing for any auto dealer or the town of Smyrna.
Thank you, Mr. Schultz. We appreciate your comments.
Vice Mayor, may I say something?
Yes, please.
We hear you loud and clear, and we want to hear you again at a meeting on April the 24th. My intention is to recommend to the council that we defer this vote by one month. On April the 24th at 10:00, if you're a local auto dealer, we'll have a meeting in the boardroom back here, and we'll hear your concerns. The common denominator among concerns appears to be the striping of the lots, and I think we respect that. Our intention when we set out was to kind of tidy up Lowry Street, make it look a little bit better. We weren't trying to trample on your rights. We just want a more presentable business. And I'm hearing from some that they appreciate that and they respect that. The first two people, and I see my friend Bill Fritz from Autoland back there. So the council, I think, is amenable to defer by a month. Again, Wednesday, April 24th, 10:00, if you're interested in coming and weighing in on the ordinance, we invite you to attend that.
Thank you, Mr. Gill. Anybody else here for car lot sales? Mr. Imam... I'm going to try to pronounce your name. Imamov? Not here? Okay. All right, so we'll move to the next one. We have a gentleman, Mike Yarber. Is Mike here?
Here.
Mr. Yarber, if you would come to the microphone, please.
Okay. No problem.
You have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Mike Yarber, and in fact, I'm a recent resident here in Smyrna. Moved from the big city of Murfreesboro to another big city of Smyrna. So I really like it here. Been in Tennessee since '83, so kids grew up here and really, really liked the area. I live on 5909 Covent Lane on the corner of Hartford Sheerway. It's not on GPS or Google or anything. Does that mean I still have to pay property taxes?
You could double because you don't know where you are.
Yeah. Darn.
We'll have trouble finding you so your fees go up.
Covent Lane is being expanded to a new road called Lincolnshire Road, as you see in your planning. And we have a lot of construction there. You know, you're building houses left and right in the area, and people want to move to Smyrna. And I kind of titled this as "Construction Factory Like the Indy 500." There are trucks coming through our neighborhood like nobody's business, and they're just flying through our neighborhoods. And I don't think they have to come through our streets, our paved streets, to go through their construction areas, and I'll get to that in a second. Like I said, I've lived there since September 17, and there's three things that has happened. My truck has been hit. I parked it out on the street. See, they ran through my yard, so I've got a bunch of divots in my yard now, and the neighbor's mailbox has been knocked down. So I thought, what can I do? You know, this is not good. So I called around here to the city, and I called the mayor's office, talked to a nice lady in the mayor's office, and she said, "Well, you need to call Mr. Oliver Constable," which you may or may not know. So he's a project manager of the area. I said, "Well, that won't do me any good because I've emailed, called, sent pictures," and they're not missing in action as far as I'm concerned. Which is case in point, I had... There's a little bit of a hill next to my house, and there's nothing but mud there. There's no plants or anything, trees or nothing, just mud. And that mud was coming down into my yard, and I couldn't get them to, you know, come out there and clean that up, build a little dam or something until they finished developing the neighborhood. So I went to the Planning Commission over here next door, and they was able to call somebody. They got their bulldozer, and they put rocks up, and so they got able to stop the flow of muds going down through the sidewalk and the streets and everything.
Three minutes, Vice Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Diane. Mr. Yarber?
Yes.
We appreciate your concerns, and I'm glad that you just mentioned that you talked to somebody in our planning department about your neighborhood. I'd like to ask you a question, if it's okay.
Okay.
The way you're talking about the traffic coming up and down your road, is there or do you know, is there not, a construction entrance for this subdivision?
Yes, and I have that as my next point.
Okay, so, all right. So what I'd like to do is refer you to Kevin and perhaps Chief Arnold back there about maybe having that patrolled a little bit more.
Yeah, they have a very nice gravel. I think that's what's going to be Lincolnshire Road eventually, where they can go through there.
That's what they're supposed to use.
And they can turn around, go back out to our neighborhood.
But we appreciate you coming to us. Chief Arnold's back there. He might be able to put some more patrol in there and keep an eye on it for you. And I'm glad that...
Bottom line is, you have nobody to go to, say, "Okay, you know, my yard's been run over" or something, you know.
And I would advise you don't...
Yeah, I want that to pay for that.
I would advise you not to park in the street. That's probably not good.
Okay, well, I'm parking in the sidewalk, and they told me, "You're not supposed to park on your sidewalk."
Well, if Chief Arnold patrols you too much, you might get a ticket for that.
Catch the wing.
We appreciate you. Thank you, Mr. Yarber.
Okay, thank you very much. I really appreciate it.
Yes, sir. All right, so we'll move into our meeting agenda, and Ms. Diane, would you call the roll? Oh, I'm sorry, we're going to do our prayer for her.
Prayer.
Prayer and her pledge. So is Pastor Powell here? Troy Powell, are you here? You're going to come up and do the prayer at the podium for us, if you don't mind, sir. And afterwards, we're going to stand and do the pledge, and Ms. Diane, lead us in that.
Let's pray. Lord, first and foremost, we want to thank you for your amazing grace, your much-needed mercy. Thank you for this life we have and the talents you've given us, as well as the opportunity to be involved in the responsibilities divinely given to us today. In your word, you've instructed that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities since you have established those very authorities to promote peace and order and justice. And so therefore, I pray particularly for this assembled council. I'm asking that you would grant them wisdom to govern among the conflicting interests and issues of our times. Give them a sense of the welfare and true needs of our people. Grant to them a keen thirst for justice and righteousness, confidence in tasks set before them, the ability to work together in harmony, even when there is honest disagreement. And Father, grant personal peace and protection over them and their families. I pray for the agenda set before them today. Give them an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around. We pray for greater authority and confidence in you, God, greater clarity of our identity and our calling in you, greater purpose as we approach everyday tasks, greater joy in knowing I'm in the sweet spot of God's blessing, greater influence over our marriages, our families, our friends, and the people around us, and greater impact in the town of Smyrna, Rutherford County, Nashville, and the world. Thank you, Lord. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Pastor Powell. Ms. Diane, we appreciate that. Now we'll do our roll call.
Councilman Cole?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Morell?
Here.
Councilwoman North?
Here.
Councilwoman Peebles?
Here.
Councilman Sullivan?
Here.
Vice Mayor Atkins?
Here.
Mayor Reed?
All right, thank you. Next, we have approval or correction of the minutes from March 13, 2018, and March 29, 2018. Council? We in order?
In order, Vice Mayor.
Any questions or comments about that? If not, we'll take a motion for the minutes.
I'll move. We approve the minutes.
We have a motion?
Second.
In a second. Any other comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The carries. Correspondence and communications, we good?
Yep.
Nothing today?
Nope.
Awards and recognitions, I think we do have a proclamation this evening for our annual Senior Citizens Day, which is a big event. Before we do this, I'd like to make a comment or two. I think everybody up here probably would like to make one, and I'll let them if they so need to. But we so appreciate what the senior citizens mean to our community. And Fran, I can't tell you how much I see most of your senior friends smiling when I see them. And the trips that you guys take on Facebook, I think we all might want to go. It looks pretty fun. So with that, I'm going to have Ms. Diane read the proclamation, and then I'll present that to you in a moment.
Whereas older Americans are productive, active, and influential members of society, sharing essential talents, wisdom, and life experience with their families, friends, and neighbors. And whereas America's aging population has reached a turning point as one of our nation's largest generations, the baby boomers started turning 60, becoming eligible as older Americans. And whereas, in 1963, the Older Americans Act was adopted by the United States Congress. And whereas, the town of Smyrna is dedicated to ensuring that Smyrna, Tennessee is a good place in which to mature and grow older, a place in which older people can participate to the fullest and can find the encouragement, acceptance, assistance, and services they need to continue to lead lives of independence and dignity. And whereas, Smyrna, Tennessee, through a U.S. News and Forbes Magazine national survey, has been declared one of the nation's most desirable places to retire. And whereas, the month of May has traditionally been celebrated with tributes to older persons through ceremonies, events, fairs, and other activities at the Smyrna Senior Citizens Center and other locations. And whereas, the Smyrna Senior Citizens Center, a nonprofit organization formed in 1971, currently serving approximately 500 members for recreational, physical, educational, and social activities, as well as travel opportunities, is dedicated to the well-being of its members and with the support of the town of Smyrna, will organize and hold annually a Senior Citizens Day in Smyrna. Now therefore, I, Mary Esther Reed, Mayor of the town of Smyrna, do hereby proclaim May 1, 2018, as the second annual Senior Citizens Day in Smyrna, Tennessee, and encourage all Smyrna citizens to join me in this worthy observance proclaimed this 10th day of April 2018.
All right, thank you, Ms. Diane. Ray, would you come up? And let's give them a big round of applause because I'm going to let you hold that. Some of these people I know, and they don't feel like seniors to me because I don't feel like a senior to them, but we're all kind of seniors, so squeeze on in here. We're going to get a picture. And thank you, guys, again, for all being here and being a part of it.
If you could just a little bit closer. Very good. Okay, and then if you're looking here.
Say "senior."
And, come back. And, thank you.
We're going to let Fran say something real quick.
Thank you so much. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Fran Dunn, and I am the executive director at the Senior Citizens Center here in Smyrna. On behalf of the Board of Directors and all the members of the Smyrna Senior Center, including those of us who are here tonight, I want to thank the town council for your recognition of the Smyrna Senior Citizens Center and more specifically, all senior citizens in Smyrna. I'm proud and honored to be a part of this organization that provides opportunities for seniors, that enriches their lives, whether it be activities that take place at the center, trips that we take, or just being a resource of information for all senior citizens in our community. In fact, the one thing that I say to my seniors all the time is that I love my job. We've been very busy at the Senior Center this year. Since January 1, we've added 49 brand-new members, and over 400 new members since January of 2015. Sadly, we also lose a few members each year, but as of today, our membership totals 519 members. We're still experiencing growing pains, but I'm thrilled to say that we now have someone who will be assisting us with strategic planning for our future. And our main goal for 2018 is to develop a master plan for an enlarged or new building somewhere within the downtown area. And I did meet with the folks from Klein Sweeney yesterday, so they're well aware of what our wants and desires are. We're busy preparing for the third Smyrna Senior Citizens Day. We will once again be hosting an open house on Tuesday, May 1, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. We will be showcasing all of our activities and events during this open house. We'll also have an outdoor expo, weather permitting, where healthcare agencies and providers will be set up to provide useful information and services that benefit seniors. I'd like to take this opportunity to invite all of you, as well as everyone in Smyrna, to come to our open house. Our members will be available to give tours, answer questions, and to share our story with everyone that joins us that day. We're also busy preparing for our Older Americans Celebration on May 8. Our members will enjoy a catered meal and entertainment provided by Jeff Dayton, who was guitarist and bandleader for 15 years for Glenn Campbell. Many of our members will be out in the community asking for door prizes from Smyrna businesses to be given away during that celebration. HG, if any of you are willing to donate a door prize for this event, please contact the center to let us know. Finally, I want to mention to everyone that we've been nominated for the inaugural Light Up Local Firefly Awards, sponsored by the Smyrna and Murfreesboro Independent Merchants Association for one of the best nonprofit organizations. So I'd like to ask each of you and everyone in Smyrna to please go vote for us for this award. Voting ends Friday. And one thing that I didn't include in my remarks that I want to mention, you know, you only have to be 55 to be a member of our center, and it's a simple application to fill out and only $25 annually. And I think one of our new members this year might be sitting over here to my left. And if I had thought about it, but I think that would be a great retirement gift for you all to give to Mr. Gill, is a membership to the Smyrna Senior Center.
I think it would be, too, although I had a Rolex in mind.
We'll get that for him.
Okay, great. Again, we're very grateful for the opportunity to serve Smyrna senior citizens, and we appreciate all the support that we receive from the town, its businesses, and its citizens. Thank you very much for this time and recognition.
Thank you, Fran. Before you leave, would you fill us in a little bit how your indoor yard sale went this past week?
Wow. We had about double the merchandise that we've had in previous years, and our gross profits were over $7,000, which was about $2,000 more than we've made in previous years. So thanks to everybody for that as well. We had a lot of community people who donated, and the weather cooperated with us. It was just fabulous. So thanks to everyone.
We love the chili. We love the spaghetti. We love the visits. You know, at times, we get to come and speak to your group, and it's always fun and interesting. As I always say, we learn more from them a lot of times when we come over there to visit you than they might learn from us about the town. So we just appreciate your membership, your people, and how much they mean to our community. I always say, if you want to find a treasure, go to the Senior Center. Indoor yard sale or whatever it is, we have a lot of treasures there. I spoke with Janie Redfield this afternoon before the meeting started. One of the things, while you're here, I'd like for you to hear what we as a body continue to work for is senior housing here in Smyrna. We a lot of times have to work with developers, and developers get to call their shots on yield and cost and so forth, but I can tell you, this group right here, because we talk about it quite frequently, we would love to see... I'm reaching out publicly now. We would love to see some of those developers that come to our community to bring a product to us that we can look at that makes sense for our aging senior population. We don't have enough of it. Janie said she had to move to Murfreesboro to find what she was looking for. We hated losing Janie because I grew up in her neighborhood. So with that, I just wanted to share with you guys, we all want what you want. Smyrna's a great place to retire and live, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right.
Fran, tell Mary Lou we missed her. We're thinking about her.
She's having a tough time.
Hey, HG, I think you just got called out for a donation, I think. I think that's what that was.
She knows a soft touch when she says one.
And I call that a lot.
Yes, you do.
She'll call you by name.
Thank you all.
Thank you, folks.
It's time to go eat.
Oh, is it? Okay.
She's right.
All right, we'll keep moving. We'll move into our consent agenda this evening. Consent agenda is set forth by our workshop, so I'm going to read the consent agenda, and if there's anything in here that any of the council members would like or prefer to pull out separately, let me know. I'll go ahead and read this, and then we'll take a vote on it. So item A is approval of the terms of and the authorization for the mayor to execute an extension contract with North Alabama Fire Equipment Company relative to fire department turnout gear, bunker boots, turnout coats, turnout pants, suspenders, and fire hoods. B, approval and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Cummins Crosspoint relative to fire department generator maintenance. C, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Yerry Howell and Associates relative to audit services for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2018. D, consideration of the declaration of surplus items. E, approval of the terms of and authorization for mayor to execute a contract with RJ Young relative to maintenance agreement for the new copier at Town Hall. F, the approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a rental agreement with Betty Bryn Children's Museum, Inc., relative to the adventures of Mr. Potato Head exhibit in the Smyrna Outdoor Adventure Center. G, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Southeastern Compost relative to disposal of sludge from the wastewater treatment plant. And the final one, H, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a professional services agreement with McKim and Creed relative to inflow and... I should say infiltration, I and I sewer system evaluation. Is there any comments or questions about any of the consent agenda? All right, if not, we'll take a motion on the consent agenda.
Motion that we approve.
We have a motion. Need a second. Rock you? Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And a motion carries. Now we'll move into our old business. We have a public hearing this evening for consideration of resolution relative to a plan of services for property located on Tax Map 56, Parcel 50. Kevin?
This is a kind of tied to the annexation request. This is the next item on your agenda. This is for the annexation, or the plan of services for the annexation on Baker Road or just east of Baker Road, 16.71 acres. This just puts into writing all the services the town would be providing upon the effective date of annexation. The town would be providing all services to this area except for water, as this does allow within consolidated utility districts boundary area for water. The planning commission did review this plan of services and did recommend approval of it unanimously.
All right, thank you. Since this is a public hearing, we will... First of all, any questions for Kevin? All right, since this is a public hearing, we will go to the public to see if anybody is present to speak for or against. If you are, come to the microphone. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and go to the council for a vote.
I'll make a motion. We approve.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Kevin, Item B, consideration of an ordinance relative to the annexation of property located on tax map fifty-six, parcel fifty, containing approximately sixteen point seven-one acres, requested by RHB LLC. Zoning would be R three. The recommendation also includes the annexation of approximately fifteen hundred linear feet of the existing right-of-way of Baker Road. The property is located east of Baker Road, south of I twenty-four. This is a second reading.
This is the annexation and zoning request of R three. It does lie, it's east of Baker Road, just south of the I twenty-four right-of-way there. Surrounding zoning is a mix of PRD in town, which is the Meadows PRD, and then RM in Rutherford County. The land use plan would support a medium-density, single-family residential development in this area. Again, the town would be providing all services except for water. Recommendation, we did recommend to planning commission, and they did recommend as part of the annexation, that the town would also annex the approximately fifteen hundred feet of the existing right-of-way of Baker Road. It basically would be from the, basically just south of the I twenty-four right-of-way, south to the southernmost boundary of the property. And so it is approximately fifteen hundred feet. This does connect the requested property to the town, so it is a contiguous annexation in this manner. The planning commission did review this request and did recommend approval unanimously.
All right, being this is a public hearing, we'll open this to the public. If anybody is here to speak for or against this, please come to the podium. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and go to the council for a motion.
I'll make a motion. We approve.
A second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Do you want to cover C here as well, Kevin?
Yes.
Consideration of a resolution memorandum of ordinance eighteen oh eight relative to the annexation of R three zoning of property located on tax map fifty-six, parcel fifty.
Yeah, this is just the housekeeping item to make us compliant with the state law regarding annexations.
Okay. And this is also part of the public hearing, I suppose, of?
Well, there's no need for an additional public hearing.
Okay. All right, so anything else on this? We'll go to the council for a motion then.
I'll move we approve.
Second.
Think Rock you'll get the second?
Yeah.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. I'm sorry, any other discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? And that motion carries. Item D, a public hearing, consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on tax map twenty-eight, parcel one oh three point oh one, containing approximately forty-three acres, requested by Sean Collins from R three to R three. Property is located at the end of Williamsport Drive. This is a second reading. Was this withdrawn?
Yeah, this was actually, yeah, this property, we did receive an email, I did today, from Mr. Collins. He did withdraw this request. He has evidently, has canceled his contract to purchase, and so he did withdraw his rezoning request.
Well, if he's canceled his contract for purchase, in the future, it could come back from someone else.
It certainly could be requested again. An indication from the family that owns the property, they do, they may be coming back next month. But at this time, he was the applicant, he did request withdrawal. He had initially requested actually a deferral to, regarding the, having a neighborhood meeting that we talked about, first reading and all that. But since that time, he did, you know, request or withdraw, just request withdrawal, did withdraw the request. So he has, that, this one will be over and done with, but it could be, come back next month, certainly, so.
We caught a lot of emails about this one, so for those of you that emailed or called or had concerns about it, rest easy a little bit. It's been withdrawn, and so that may make you feel better, but at some point, it could come back. And of course, it'd start all over, go through planning commission.
Go back to planning commission, yes.
So there's really no reason, or is there, to have a public hearing, counsel?
No, it's been withdrawn, so no need for that.
All right, we'll move on to the next one then. Item E. Is that right? Yeah. Item E, consideration of the ordinance relative to adding language to the Town of Smyrna Municipal Code Title thirteen, property maintenance regulations, specifically adding Chapter Five pertaining to vehicles displayed for sale, rental, or distribution, and this is a second reading.
Mr. Gill, do you want to come in?
My only comment, again, I'm recommending to the council that we defer this a month. Allow me to hold an April twenty-fourth meeting at ten o'clock to hear from car lot owners and get their input to make sure we're reasonable and fair what we're doing.
Any reason to have a public hearing at this point, or allow them to speak?
I would recommend, since we advertised and folks did come out, if they would like to speak to this one, however, they will have another opportunity.
Okay, so you heard counsel. We will open it to the public for anybody that wants to speak for or against it this It's like nobody, seeing no one, we will close the public hearing and go to the council for a motion, sounds like for deferral.
I'll make a motion to defer.
A second.
We have a motion and a second to defer. Any other questions or comments?
I'd like to make a couple of comments. The intention, and I think the folks that spoke here tonight, I think they get the intention. The intention of this, what we're doing with this ordinance was not to cause any unnecessary cost or undue impact on your business. The point was to try to fix and clean up some businesses that weren't staying in compliant with existing ordinances or were just overloading their lot with inventory and making it an eyesore. So I appreciate the folks that did come out tonight. I'm glad to hear from you guys, and I'm going to be quite frank, your lots are not the ones we're mostly concerned about. You're pretty much doing it right as it is today, and there would be no need for any ordinance changes if everyone would follow your example. Unfortunately, with every rule, there's, because somebody tried to break it. So Harry's, Harry Gill's invitation for you guys to come speak, I would encourage you guys to come back and talk to him. I personally would be very interested in any suggestions and ideas that you have on how we can help those other car lots get in compliance without an ordinance, if possible. If there's a way, I think one of you mentioned a town meeting with them, and just try to help build pride. I think that's a great idea. Unfortunately, it may or may not help, which we know, right? So I do appreciate you, your guys' time and effort to come out, so I don't want to belittle that, and I wanted to make sure you guys understood that we're not intending to try to impact anybody's business or livelihood.
And I'll add to that, Mr. Jenkins and Mr. Schultz, both of you spoke this evening, and I'm glad to hear that Mr. Gill's wanting to set up a meeting with everybody and try to find a balance here. Speaking of what Steve just mentioned, you know, Lowry Street's been on our radar for a good while now. We've, we've really tried to do some good things. We have a revitalization plan underway for Lowry Street, so we need you guys to help us sell that and to help us partner so that your businesses can even look even nicer and flourish and do the things that you came to do, and that's a small business owner. So we appreciate your comments tonight. I know Mr. Jenkins mentioned that he commended Smyrna in his comments, and we appreciate that. A lot of times, we don't always get that, so thank you so much.
It's been a long time.
Yes, sir. Thank you for that. All right, any other comments?
Just to clarify for the record, just state, deferring for a month, so we have a?
Deferring for a month?
Yeah, for a month.
Do you need us to re-vote on that?
No, just as long as you restate it.
All right, we will restate, that's a one-month deferral. Okay, new business we'll start.
We didn't vote.
Oh, I'm sorry, we didn't vote. So we'll close the public hearing and go to the motion, go to the council for a motion.
We've already motioned, so, and we've already seconded. Just need to?
Oh, I'm sorry. I got a little off track. So we have a motion and a second. I thought we already did that.
Yeah, we did.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you, Steve, for keeping me straight. I lost track there. All right, now on our new business, planning commission report. Kevin?
Yeah, the first item is annexation and zoning of R three requests. It's for a piece of property on Amleville Road near Independent Hill Road. Request is by Sean Collins. It's for seven point six acres at the corner, like I says, at the corner of Amleville and Road and Independent Hill Road. It's actually addressed to sixty-six ninety Amleville Road. It is directly adjacent to a parcel that council did annex and zone R three within the last few months. Both of those parcels are adjacent to the parcels that were previously annexed and zoned PRD, which is the Lynnwood PRD. The land use plan would support an office retail multifamily mix here as it is near to eight forty. The surrounding zoning is R three in town and RM in Rutherford County in this area. It does lie within CUD's border service boundary, so we, but the town would be providing all other services. There is an existing single-family residence on this parcel that would be a part of the annexation as well. The planning commission did review this and did recommend approval unanimously.
All right, any comments or questions on Item I?
Kevin, would you talk about the sewer being run and the impact and where we're at?
Yeah, the sewer for this is, we have the, a development agreement with the Lynnwood developers. This development, as well as the adjoining parcel to the north, is dependent on that sewer. At this time, I don't know, have a timeline for when that sewer would be extended by the developer. They're, the last we heard, they're still looking and studying the market, was the wording, so. But this, so there may not ever be, or may not be any development on this parcel for quite some time till that sewer actually takes place. But they did, Mr. Collins did wish to be within the town of Smyrna, so he did request annexation.
Tim, you got anything you want to add from planning?
No, other than when you look at what we've got with Lynnwood, the immediate property above that being R three, and this R three, you know, is very consistent. And again, this is all subject to sewer being run here as far as the actual development and going forward with it. And the sewer being, again, run by Lynnwood is part of our agreement.
And at the rate we're going, we may not see sewer out there for a good while. It's taking some time, isn't it?
Right.
When's the last time you spoke with him, Kevin?
I don't know. I haven't spoken with him in a while. I know Mike Strange has talked with him more often.
January.
You're just kind of feeling the market still?
Hmm.
All right. Any other comments or questions? All right, need a motion?
I'll move we approve.
Second.
Motion and a second by H.G. Any other questions, comments? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. On this next one, Diane, would you mark me as not voting or taking place in the discussion, please? Consideration of an ordinance relative to the annexation of properties located on tax map fifty-four, parcels fifty-five, fifty-six, and tax map fifty-five, parcel thirty-one, containing a total of approximately thirty point three acres. Zoning would be R three. Properties also referenced by seventy-seven ninety-eight, seventy-eight oh eight, and seventy-eight forty, Rocky Amleville Road, and this is a first reading.
Yeah, this is, these are three separate parcels, all under contract to Mr. Collins, and he did request all the annexation, all to be annexed into the town. They're all located just east of Rocky Fork Amleville Road. They are adjacent to parcels previously annexed and zoned PRD, the Amberton PRD. Land use plan would support a medium-density residential development in this area. Surrounding zoning, again, is PRD, which is Amberton in town, and RM in Rutherford County. Again, this does lie within CUD's service area for water, but the town would be providing all other services. There is an existing single-family residence on each of these parcels, since they have, each have a separate address. Since this has come to fruition or to, to the planning commission, we've had two or three other property owners in that area have called and said, hey, we want to be annexed too. So we're probably going to see some additional, some of the adjoining parcels maybe coming The planning commission did review this and did recommend it. Six four is your against with one abstention.
All right, questions for Kevin on this?
Kevin, is parcel thirty-one there? And I'm just trying to refresh from my memory. Is that property, does it continue from where it would, I guess, meet with Inez and the property that's in the PRD there? Is that actually, does it continue to Rocky Fork as part of that parcel or?
It actually does. If you look kind of in between parcels fifty-five and fifty-six oh one, there's kind of a narrow little strip. That's a driveway, that is the driveway for parcel thirty-one.
Would it be your anticipation that with Inez there, this proposed annexation would provide access via Inez and then access at least one or maybe a couple more points off of Rocky Fork, Amleville?
Yeah, I would anticipate, because Inez Drive is being extended as part of Amberton, and so I would expect it to continue on westward.
They didn't show any type of plan, though, at this point.
We do not have that at this time, no.
Okay.
Kevin, the one strip looks like it, the one you call it a driveway, I think. But then, right next to it, there's another strip there.
It's an odd deal. There's a little strip that's kind of south of the really narrow strip, which is the driveway, that actually belongs to parcel fifty-five. I don't understand how that happened, but that is, that's what it is. That's actually a part of parcel fifty-five.
So they probably just dedicated a right-of-way out of it or something like that?
Or something. They sold a driveway to the adjoining parcel or something, and it came through the middle, and now it's, it's actually on both sides of that little narrow strip there.
Do you know, you spoke just a moment ago about some adjoining parcels that indicated they may want to be annexed. Do you know, or could you point them out to us where?
I don't know exactly which ones. I think there's some, I think there were some of the smaller ones that actually border Rocky Fork there, not the larger ones, is my understanding. I didn't actually talk to them. Some of my staff members actually did, actually talked to them, but, but there was two or three, and they were saying, hey, could we all come in together at one time? And we said, certainly, you could do that, so.
From a staff perspective, do you recommend this?
Yes.
All right, thank you, Tim. Any other questions? All right, if none, we'll go to the council for a motion or a vote.
Motion we approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And I pass. Motion carries. All right, moving on from the planning commission report, we'll go to the packaged liquor report. There were no applications for the council to consider at this time, so next is consideration of an ordinance relative to the amendment of Chapter Seven Temporary Sign Provisions, Section A, General Requirement of the Town of Smyrna Side Ordinance Regarding Banners, and this is a first reading. Jeff, or who's got this?
Nathan's going to take it.
Nathan?
Put in the work on it. Let him talk.
Mayor and council, this would be an amendment to your sign ordinance. The mayor had asked us to look into this, and fortunately, most of the work was already done by the time I got to it. So I think they had worked on a plan similar to this quite a while ago, and I just put it into the form of this amendment, but it would essentially renumber the general requirement section under temporary signs. It would prohibit the use of a banner for longer than ninety days per calendar year on a lot. So this would require that, and it defines a banner as a sign having the copy applied to cloth, paper, or fabric of any kind with only such material for backing. They may utilize a banner as a temporary sign, but they have to obtain a permit from the town. This is so the town can keep track of how many banners are being used as signs throughout the town. May not be displayed longer than thirty days, a permit is not longer than thirty days. They can get up to two additional extensions for thirty-day periods each, and, but no parcel, no parcel may display a banner as a sign for longer than ninety days. Properties located in commercial or industrial zones would display no more than two banners at any time, and such banners would not exceed thirty-two square feet, with each sixteen square feet of banner being considered as one banner. Properties located within residential zones may display no more than one banner at any time, and such banners shall not exceed six square feet. And as I said previously, no parcel, regardless of its zone, may utilize banners as temporary signs on such parcels for more than ninety days per calendar year.
Questions for Mr. Nichols?
Didn't we also agree, on here it's showing a blank, but we did agree on a fee amount, didn't we?
Mr. Smith had recommended thirty dollars. That's what he had recommended, but that's up to the council. If you're still good with that, then I would say.
I think, I think that is what we discussed last time, and that seemed to be a fair amount. I think everybody in general, anyway, felt comfortable with that. If there's any comments or questions on that, we'll take it. Is everybody good with the thirty dollars?
Can I ask a question?
Well, we have a public hearing. Well, we'll have a public hearing on this, obviously, next month.
Okay, that'll be the time to do that. Thank you, yes. Nathan, you mentioned, is it one permit fee for the total of 90 days, 30 days, and then an extension and an extension? In other words, if somebody wanted to use it 90 days throughout the year, is it a permit fee each time?
It's a permit fee at the inception, and then it says each subsequent extension would be $30.
So, or can they do a 90-day for $30?
No. Well, no permit will be longer than 30 days.
Okay.
At any one time.
All right. So each one's a $30?
Right.
All right, just want to clarify that. I don't know if that was a question.
But still, they're limited to 90 days per calendar year, correct?
Yeah.
And I really put a lot of this into form that was, it had already been prepared by the folks department. When it came to me, they prepared it quite a while ago, so I don't know a lot of the technicalities of it. Mr. Smith is here, maybe they know for sure, but.
We want to make sure we're making. That we clarify, this is for banners.
Correct.
Not your business signs.
Correct. Those would be permanent signs.
Any other comments or questions for Nathan?
This last sentence, the one we were just talking about regarding the fee. The permit application shall pay a fee for any permit issued under this part and each subsequent extension thereto in the amount of blank.
It's $30.
It's going to be 30?
Yes.
But my, my question is, is there a way to revise that sentence? Because I think it is not as clear as it could be to state it's $30 for the first permit as well as 30 additional dollars for each of the extensions. The way it reads, it could be interpreted for the full 90 days.
I'll ask the question.
That it's only $30.
Just to clarify.
Too much legally sometimes.
Well, that's why we have her.
Yes, we'll change that.
All right, Nathan, we appreciate your work on this, you and Jeff both, and in an effort, again, to do the best we can to be business-friendly, yet keep a good image, especially where we see a lot of banners. This is what, this is what your council's trying to do and leadership's trying to do. We really appreciate that effort. So, you business people out there, thank you for working with us. We're trying to make your business actually look more attractive up and down the road instead of less. So, thank you for that. Appointment of one member to the Stormwater Advisory Committee. I don't think we had any applicants, is that correct?
Last year, I don't believe.
Oh, we didn't vote on that, sorry. We do need to take a vote on the sign ordinance. Need a motion?
Motion, we approve.
Second.
Second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Wait, one second. Can we approve it with the revision of that sentence?
Yeah, with comments, yeah.
Okay.
Just to hear the staff comments, then.
Okay.
Now, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration of, oh, we skipped one here, an amendment to the sister city bylaws.
I'll take that advice, Mayor. No one else is here. So, obviously, anytime one of our boards decide to change their bylaws or to update them, the town council must ratify and approve those bylaws. They have changed them, as we discussed at workshop recently. It's not substantial. It just deals with having the background checks for the host as well as it does those that are going as chaperones. So for those families, when they're visiting, anyone that's over 18 years old, will have to have a background check for the safety.
Steve, you got anything you need to add to that, being on the committee?
No, I don't think so. I think there was some conversation about who would pay for those, and I don't know that we got a resolution there. I think the decision was the committee could elect to cover the cost if we wanted to, or something, we weren't going to include it in the amendment, is that right?
Sure, yes. It wasn't, it would just be a town policy that would not be within the bylaws. I understand.
All right, any other questions for council? Will you take a motion on this?
A motion, we approve.
A motion?
Second.
And Lori's second. Other questions or comments? If none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Now, the appointment of one member to the Stormwater Advisory Committee, and no applicants, is that correct, Jeff?
No applicants.
Okay, so we don't need to do, take any action on this? Other? We're down to other. Move pretty quick. Diane, do you have any other?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so status reports.
You know, the only thing I would say, it may fit better under announcements, is every four years, the state requires that a reappraisal be done on your property, and if you've received your appraisal in the last few days, you notice it increased substantially. First and foremost, that doesn't, we don't order that, we don't do that, and we got the same increase in our property as you guys. And I think people automatically conclude that your tax rate's going up. We have several options here. One is to roll back the rate or be revenue general. We haven't had a tax increase in, what, four or five years? I'm not too, I don't think anybody here is eager to have a tax increase. I don't get a vote on that. But my advice now is just to maintain calm and realize that there's the possibility there won't be any tax increase at all.
Well, and speaking of that, I can touch on that a little bit for what I do for a living, and I can tell you that the market and home sales have skyrocketed in the last couple of years. So, the property assessor's well aware of that, and they know the values have gone up. We're all receiving the same tax documents that you're receiving in the mail. Just so you know, that is from the county property assessor. It's not coming from us, and we're going to do all we can to stay revenue neutral on our part. So, if you have a complaint about the value of your property going up, you might want to call the property assessor's office and talk to them. That is not our doings here, so just make that clear. Anything else, Mr. Gill?
No, I want to remind everybody, we have the expo this Saturday. What time is it, Bill?
From 9:02, sir.
9:02 at the Smyrna Events Center.
So, we're really kind of done with status reports. We're in announcement portion, right?
Okay, yeah.
Okay. That was your announcement?
That's, that's my sole announcement.
The only one you have?
No more announcements from me.
So that's all you got?
That's it.
Okay. Mr. Peach, do you have any announcements?
No announcements.
All right. How about you, Raquel? Do you have anything?
Yes, actually, I do. The Smyrna Arts Commission is having a pancake breakfast. I don't know, there may be a slide for that, too, or it may be on Mark's list, I'm not sure, but.
It's okay. I haven't even looked at my list yet.
There's a, yes, it's on here. So, the Arts Commission is having a fundraiser Saturday, April 21st, from 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. at the Smyrna Chili's on Samaritely. The tickets are $5, and the fundraiser is to help create, or to raise funds in order to promote art around Smyrna. For instance, we have an art crawl every year, which will be coming up in June, and we invite citizens. We have categories for elementary, middle school, middle and high school, as well as an adult category, for all types of art. And we want to continue to build that, as well as do some other initiatives here in Smyrna. So we're having this fundraiser to get out awareness and create a budget to be able to do those things. And secondly, I'd like to say that we, this, the last two days have been in a budget retreat, and all the departments have had to provide their information, and I just want to thank all of them for the job that they have done, for providing that to us, and for all that you do on a daily basis, not just then. I know it's a lot of work and a lot goes into it, and you all are juggling a lot to keep the business of Smyrna moving forward, as well as having to do things like that. So I just want to extend my appreciation for all that you've done.
Thank you.
That will be it.
Thank you so much. All right, HG?
I'm going to let you come back to me if you would.
All right, we'd be glad to do that. Tim?
Nothing for me tonight, anxiously awaiting HG.
It is kind of exciting, man.
Boy, you've got us all sitting on pins and needles now.
Maybe we should all defer, so we're just waiting on him.
I'll let Tim speak to this, because I know it's a little early, but I received my request for Wings of Freedom's fish fry sponsorship today in the mail, which I will gladly do. But do you want to fill everybody in a little bit on when that is?
I may need Lori's help on that. I don't know that I've seen.
September 8.
Thank you, September 8.
That's a big event for Smyrna, and it raises a lot of money for a lot of great people.
It raised just over 163,000.
63.
Thousand last year, all going back to local charities.
Right back in the community.
Our area.
Yes, it's awesome. Thank you, Tim.
Thanks, Mark.
Yes, sir. Steve?
A couple of things. Today, actually, yesterday, we got an opportunity to visit the Jeff Kuss Memorial Site and see the progress being made there. It is, it is very impressive, and it is quite extraordinary to stand in the bow there and look out over the airport, which all of you will get a chance to do soon. We are still a little short of our goal, something less than 100,000. I'm not sure what the number is, but if you're interested in a paver or bricks, I think you're quickly approaching the deadline that you can get those still in. So I invite you.
Before the event, they can always do it.
Absolutely. There's, if you want them included at the time of the ribbon cutting, then you're reaching that point soon. But we would encourage you to reach out if you're still interested in doing that. I know that we also have been spending the last few days in our, in our budget sessions. So to Mr. Gill's comments about the tax rate, I've received several emails about what that means, and quite frankly, several folks have asked me, what does revenue neutral mean? So quickly, to explain that, if your, if your tax rate in Smyrna, if your tax amount in Smyrna was $500 last year, and the value goes up on your house, if we remain revenue neutral, then we will lower the rate so that your out-of-pocket does not change. You still pay $500, even if your house is worth twice as much. So that's what revenue neutral means. So the assessment does not mean that you're going to pay necessarily more taxes in the Town of Smyrna. We are still in that process. We are still evaluating our budget and trying to make sure that we have all the funds we need to do all the things we need to do. So we haven't voted on that yet and made that decision yet, but I can tell you that none of us are anticipating a tax increase, and I think that we generally would like to not have one. But just because you got this valuation, I don't want you to think that it automatically means your money's going up. Revenue neutral didn't mean anything to me about two years ago either, so I just wanted to make sure that everyone understood the concept there. The last thing, I'll probably mention this every meeting for the next two months, but if y'all could remember those that are serving, and my son in particular, he left for bootcamp Monday, April 2nd. So he's probably pretty homesick about now, and probably, for once, he would actually like to watch this on TV, probably. Usually, if I ever made him watch, he would get upset with me, but I bet he would appreciate to watch it now. So he, he's in the throes of Paris Island and Marine Corps Bootcamp right now. So keep those that are serving in your prayers. That's all.
Thanks, Steve. How about you, Lori?
So, of course, we had the groundbreaking ceremony at Motlow for the third building a couple of weeks ago. This past week, I was at a meeting in Motlow, and we have submitted our plans for our fourth building. So, of course, that doesn't mean anything yet, because we still have money to raise for the third building. So, but we're all excited about that.
Here's a good picture of you.
Oh, there is a good picture. There's several of us. Also, the Sam Davis Home is having their annual wine on the veranda. It is scheduled for April 27th at 6:00 o'clock, a great way to support our historic Sam Davis Home here in this community. That's it.
That's all?
Yeah.
All right. Well, I want to echo what's been said, before I get back to HG, about our directors and the retreat we've been in the last couple of days. I can tell you, when I get to work with these people up here as well, we don't really brag on each other, but it's such a pleasure to work with a group of people that have the heart of Smyrna and that interest at the highest level. You know, most of us have grown up here, I think all of us have grown up here, right? You were close. We, we have a transplant, but she's been here a while.
30-some years.
Yeah, so we count that. But I just want to tell you guys that we want what's best for our town, and we want what's best for you guys. The team of people we get to work with, Mr. Gill and on down, every director, every employee, they do an awesome job keeping this town ticking and on track and budgeting and making sure things get done with roads and utilities at the pace that we're able and allowed to keep up with. And when I say that, we have to deal with a lot of other government stuff many times with the Tennessee Department of Transportation and so forth. So, just so you'll know, our hands are a little bit tied on timeliness with those, those things, but these guys out here, and it was just, once again, proven to me again today, they stay on top of it, and they do their very level best to get some widenings and some road infrastructure and stuff done that we've so badly needed, and we're very aware of that. So I want to brag on the staff, our directors, the employees, and everybody involved in the town. Diane's office, collecting money and doing all that stuff, everybody has a part, and it's a team effort. So thank you, guys, for that. I don't know if everybody's aware or not, if you know or didn't know, Johnny Jones. And Johnny Jones was a friend of mine and probably a friend of many of yours. He passed away this past weekend. Johnny was blind from birth. He has a son, a brother, I'm sorry, Chucky. And if you were raised around Smyrna, and you ever saw two guys walking with blind sticks, they knew their way around, and they probably knew a whole lot more than we did. So, just for Johnny's sake, I want to say, Johnny, get to see again now. So we're real happy that Johnny has moved on to a better place, and just want to bring up his memory. He was a special guy. And while I'm doing that, Ms. Diane, your son's been sick, and we want to acknowledge prayers for your son, continue to lift him up a little bit. So, that's really all I have. I'm going to go back and do the slides now, real quick, and then I'll turn it back over to HG.
I'll do this, I'm ready.
Oh, you're ready?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
First off, I want to express appreciation for the staff. I mean, everybody's presentation during the last couple of days was spot-on and very informative, and I think it helps us a whole lot in going into next year's budget and finding out exactly what y'all are working on. But earlier tonight, y'all heard Ms. Fran talk about the Light Up Local Firefly Awards, and what that is, is a collaboration between the Smyrna Independent Merchants Association and the Murfreesboro Local Independent Merchants Association also. And there's categories for the Murfreesboro businesses and categories for the Smyrna businesses, and you can vote for each one of them, and it will be culminated by the announcements at a festivities at The Grove on Tuesday, April 24th. You can go to simatn.org and find out more information. And while you're doing that, just continue to shop local. That's one of the things that became very apparent when we were looking at the budget yesterday, was that our greatest source of revenue in the community, people would think it's the property taxes, but it's not. It is the local sales tax. One other thing I need to announce, that I have a new grandson. His name is Fenton Cole Patrick McGary, and he's a fine-looking young man.
Sounds a little Irish.
Uh, there's a lot of Irish in there.
Little Irish, yeah.
The Irish give him three names, I guess.
Yeah.
But that's all I've got. Thank you.
All right. So let me finish up the announcements that we have, and I will tell you the reason Mayor Reed is not here tonight. She normally does this, and Mayor Reed's being recognized tonight with an award for, I think I have this right, the Tennessee Trail Blazer Award. I hope that's correct. If not, Mayor Reed, if you watched this back, I apologize if I got that incorrect, but it really has a lot to do with her leadership in the community and her leadership in business. And we couldn't be prouder that she's being recognized for that award. So, in her stead, I will tell you, that's why she's not with us tonight, and glad that she's receiving some, some honor. Coming up, you'll see it on the slide over here, we have Earth Day Celebration, April 14th. This is at the Smyrna Outdoor Adventure Center, the SOAC Center, and that is from 11:00 to 3:00. And this is a family and friend event. Enjoy live, live farm and exotic animals, big and small, climbing and interactive learning on how to keep our planet safe. This is a free event, so if you want to take your kids, it costs nothing. Registration is suggested, though, through the Community Pass. Contact miranda.pewitt@townofsmyrna.org for information. Next, Raquel has already mentioned the pancake breakfast, so we'll skip that. That's a $5 breakfast, by the way, and tickets must be purchased in advance for that. The Smyrna Town Center Mother's Day Buffet.